City Council is now in session. Please stand for the invocation by Councilman Goldberg. That will be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, which will be led by Carson and Matthew, heir of lights from troop one.
Let us pray. Almighty God, please be with us tonight as we handle our city business. Help guide us with your fairness to all. Bless everyone present tonight with your love and favor. Bless our nation and continue to allow it to be the hoop of the world. Let our democracy and freedom be a light for all to emulate. Give good health and healing to all that are being challenged and give them peace. We ask for this in your holy name and let us all say amen.
Carson and Matthew, would you like to come forward? I got one. Lost his help.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God with liberty and justice.
All right, good job. Okay, we'll now move to approval of the minutes from the April 20th, 2022 work session and regular meeting. A motion would be in order. Councilman Williams?
Move for approval.
Got a motion for approval from Councilman Williams. Councilman Johnson?
Second.
Second from Councilman Johnson. Any discussion of the motion? Hearing none. Council members prepare to vote. Please vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
Okay, I've been informed that the United Way was scheduled for proclamation, special presentations this evening, and they are running late due to traffic. Due to that, we need to move them to staff reports, and a motion would be in order. Councilman Goldberg.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, I move to move them to later part of the agenda.
Councilman Fawcett?
Second the motion.
Got a second from Councilman Fawcett. Any discussion of the motion? Hearing none. Council members prepare to vote. Council members, please vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
Okay, we're going to have one special presentation, a proclamation in recognition of National Community Planning Month. Mr. Manager, please present an overview.
Yes, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. Tonight's presentation is a recognition of National Community Planning Month, which is observed annually during the month of October. With us this evening to accept the proclamation provides some remarks is Kevin Wine, interim Director of Planning and Community Development, along with Mr. Arthur Singleton, our Chair of the Planning Commission and Staff.
Madam Clerk, would you please read the proclamation?
Whereas community planning and plans can help manage the constant change that affects localities in a way that provides better choices for how people work and live, and whereas community planning provides an opportunity for all residents to be meaningfully involved in making choices that determine the future of their community. And whereas the full benefits of planning requires public officials and citizens who understand, support, and demand excellence in planning and plan implementation. And whereas the month of October is designated as National Community Planning Month throughout the United States of America and its territories. And whereas the American Planning Association endorses National Community Planning Month as an opportunity to highlight how planning can foster sustainable, equitable, and resilient communities. Now, therefore, I, Michael D. Doohan, Mayor of the City of Suffolk, Virginia, do hereby proclaim October 2022 as Community Planning Month, and witness whereof, I have herein to set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Suffolk to be affixed on this 19th day of October in the year of our Lord 2022.
Who's the proud recipient?
I'll take it here. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Vice Mayor, members of council. To my knowledge, this is the first time that the cities recognize National Community Planning Month. So for this opportunity and recognition, we're very appreciative. The primary purpose of National Community Planning Month is to raise the visibility of the important role planners play in planning communities across the United States. And planning, particularly at the local government level, is a unique profession. We have the great privilege of working with and assisting the citizens of Suffolk, the development community, governmental agencies, and any and all entities that are in between with and at the time through the planning process by ensuring folks are informed and aware of what's going on, as well as our important requirements that have been established to ensure the principles detailed in our planning documents are adhered to and adequately achieved. We do this with our several guiding principles that are always at the top of our minds: protection of the health, safety, and well-being of our citizens, ensuring the quality of life the citizens have come to know remains, and the preservation of the unique characteristics that set Suffolk apart. We strive to achieve these goals each and every day through our work, and we have an absolutely amazing team here to ensure we're successful. The folks with me here this evening are the foundation of our planning division, and the hard work they put in each and every day is admirable and worth recognition, as it's an honor to work alongside them. The team is comprised of smart and impressive folks, and the day-to-day planning processes of the city are not possible without this team. I would like to take this opportunity to acknowledge all that they do to ensure that the city and its citizens achieve their shared goal of having a well-planned and thriving community. Of the many comments we receive from the community, one that I will never tire of hearing is that the team here tonight is a pleasure to work with. This is very, very true, and I could not be more proud of them. At this time, I'll turn it over to Chairman Arthur Singleton of our Planning Commission, who will share a couple thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and Vice Mayor, and Council, and of course, the City Manager, Ms. Almore. As a Planning Commission, as a Chairman of the Planning Commission, I'd like to take this opportunity in recognition of a national planning month to recognize the quality of planning professional that the City of Suffolk has and are fortunate to have. This is a staff that always prepare for their evaluation and analysis and application to ensure that we, as a city recommending body on the land use issues, are well informed and prepared to make the proper recommendation to you, all as it relates to a city comprehensive plan and unified development ordinance. We, as Planning Commissioners, take our roles in the planning process seriously, and it's because of this team in our planning department that you and the decision-makers can rest assured that all the difficult decisions that came before you are well researched and analyzed, and that our recommendations are rooted with the purpose, intent, and overreaching guiding principles of the comprehensive plan. At the forefront of each decision we make, I am proud to work with it, I'm proud to work that we are Planning Commissions due for the citizens of Suffolk, and thank you all for your city governing body to instill the trust in all of us. We evaluate the merit of the applications that come before our commission. At times, the decisions we make are difficult. However, because of our members of the city planning staff, we can rest assured that the issues have been thoroughly and appropriately researched and recommendation reached in a manner consistent with the principles of the city guiding planning documents. Thanks for your support of us.
I was going to call you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Council. If I may, I would like to extend my thanks and recognition to Kevin Wine, who's been our fearless leader for our department for many months and years, really. His mentorship and leadership has been just unbelievable. In my experience working with him, his mentorship has been the best that I've received in my career. So I think we just want to especially recognize Kevin. So thank you.
At this time, we will consider the removal of items from the consent agenda and adoption of the entire agenda as presented. Removal of any item from the consent agenda would only be necessary if any member of City Council wishes to vote on a specific item separately, and a motion would be required. If there are any items that members of City Council wish to remove, the consent agenda to be voted on separately, a motion would be appropriate at this time. Hearing none. Madam Clerk, would you please read the agenda?
At this point, Mayor, we would have to have a motion to adopt the agenda as presented and then move on to the consent agenda.
There we go. Okay, a motion would be in order. Councilman Fawcett?
I move to approve this.
Move for approval. Councilman Williams?
Second, Ed, Mayor.
A second from Councilman Williams. Is there any discussion of the motion? Hearing none. Council members prepare to vote. Please vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
Madam Clerk, are there any agenda speakers at this time?
No, Mayor Doohan.
If not, please present the agenda.
Consent agenda item number seven: An ordinance to accept and appropriate funds from the Commonwealth of Virginia Department of Aviation for the Suffolk Executive Airport. And consent agenda item number eight: An ordinance to accept and appropriate funds from the OBC Healthcare Foundation for the City of Suffolk's Department of Parks and Recreation.
Mr. Manager, please provide an overview of the items.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, in regards to item seven, the city has received $876.38 from the Commonwealth of Virginia Department of Aviation in support of the Suffolk Executive Airport for FY 2223. The funds will be used to purchase a replacement fuel transfer pump for the airport. Adoption of the ordinance will increase the revenues and expenditures of the aviation facilities fund budget by $876.38. A local match is required of $1,779.32 and is available in FY 2223 aviation facilities fund budget. In regards to item eight, the city has received funding in the amount of $50,000 from the OBC Healthcare Foundation for the purchase of outdoor fitness equipment to be installed at the Suffolk Seaboard Trail Fitness Park located near the intersection of Hughesville Road and Shoulders Hill Road. Adoption of the ordinance will increase the revenues and expenditures of the consolidated grants fund budget by $50,000. A local match of $50,000 is required and is available by transfer from the open space project in the capital fund budget.
If there are no questions about the items, the motion being ordered to approve the consent agenda as presented. Councilman Fawcett?
Move to approve as presented.
Got a motion for approval from Councilman Fawcett. Councilman Johnson?
Second that motion.
Second from Councilman Johnson. Is there any discussion of the motion? Hearing none. Council members prepare to vote. Please vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
Okay, we'll now move to public hearings. Our first public hearing is an ordinance to enter into a cable franchise agreement with Shenandoah Cable Television, LLC. Mr. Manager, please provide an overview.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, Deputy City Manager Kevin Hughes will provide the overview.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, I wanted to walk you through a few slides of a quick overview of the item that you have for consideration this evening for the public hearing. This is a franchise cable agreement with Chantel, known as Shenandoah Cable Television. So as you are aware, the city has taken on a multifaceted approach towards increasing broadband services throughout the city, both from a rural standpoint, a broader economic development standpoint, as well as a competitive standpoint. That's what we're here to talk about today. And so what this action and this agreement in front of you would do would introduce a new user to the City of Suffolk to provide cable, data, and telephone. Currently, the only group that's doing that today is Charter Spectrum. So this would be a competitor offering service into the City of Suffolk, which has been of interest of our citizens for quite some time. We've spent some time talking about Chantel with you both previously, but just as a refresher, they date back since 1902 out of the Shenandoah Valley. They have platforms that include television, I'm sorry, telephone, video, internet data, fiber, optics, and tower facilities. They're currently operating in Virginia, West Virginia, Maryland, Pennsylvania, and Kentucky. They have over a million customers. We've been working with them on this process via this agreement since about 2020. You have seen Chantel in front of you previously. In 2021, the council approved of a right-of-way service agreement. That was allowing them to start the process for data, which they have started installation within the right-of-way and pulling some permits on that. Within that agreement, you may recall, it spoke that they had a timetable to move forward and get this franchise agreement that we're talking about today in place. I think it was a two-year window, so we're about a year removed from that from you today. So we've made good progress there. Additionally, to prepare for the infrastructure, you've approved a conditional use permit for a point of presence out at the Health and Human Service Building, where the EDA is working on a lease with Chantel. So just a couple of quick items I thought I'd hit on. I won't hit on everything, the agreements in your package. Just, so what it really does is talk about the opportunity to put assets in the right-of-way. They still have to get permits, so we have to know where things are going, but allows for that opportunity similar to what Charter or other users are in place in our right-of-way. They will allow for three PEG channels. That's Public Educational Government. So those that are watching on Charter today, you'll be able to sign up for Chantel and watch this public body as well. That'll also be an opportunity for the school system if they so choose, or a community network as well. So you have three of those, similar to what we have today with Charter. I'll hit on a map here a second, so this will make a little bit more sense here in a second. But there's a franchise area that they're committing to. And so within two years, they will have the infrastructure in place to provide support for that franchise area. The franchise area that I'm going to share with you next, that's in the agreement as an exhibit, represents about 75% of all the residential units in the City of Suffolk. And then finally, the agreement is for a 10-year period of time. So walk you through real briefly here, just by some markers here. Outlined in red is your comprehensive growth boundary areas. That's the 2035 comp plan areas, both northern Suffolk as well as the central part of the city. And so the green areas speak to the franchise area that Chantel is looking to come into. And so it's a fairly robust area. Why it's not all colored in is it's detailed into developments essentially. And so there's green space and other things that kind of break up some of those green areas and why they don't touch. But you can see in the areas where we're most dense, you can see it's almost all green throughout. And so it's going to be a pretty significant footprint for service for our citizens. You'll see it very well covers both central and northern Suffolk. Additionally, it has some legs down 460, and then it goes up Route 10, up Cridenton, back to the connection of the northern post section of the northern Suffolk boundary area. And so that is the conclusion of my presentation today, and I'll be here to answer any questions following the public hearing.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Hughes. Before we open the public hearing, Madam Clerk, please explain the timing system.
This is a public hearing, and each speaker is asked to provide their name and address, and will receive three minutes to offer their comments.
This is a public hearing. Will the first speaker please come forward and provide their name and address?
Good evening. My name is Chris Kyle. I'm from Chantel. Harrisonburg, Virginia is my address. It's great to be here. This is my third time here. I want to thank Mr. Hughes, Mr. Mueller, for their work, their leadership on this agreement. There's been a lot of work behind the scenes in between the three, four times I've been here. So we are incredibly excited. This is the most advanced technology. This will be a multimillion-dollar investment that we will put in your right-of-ways. It sounds kind of simple, but it will change what people can do in their homes, how they can learn, how they can work from home. This is a big deal. We have a similar project going on in Williamsburg, James City County in York, in this area, York County. And we are very, very excited about Suffolk. It brings competition, but what we are most excited about, it brings an advanced technology with this fiber to the home. That's what this is. So we had to get a cable franchise because, well, we do want to offer video, but this is all about internet for us. So thank you for your time. Thank you for the city's leadership, and we look forward to a long relationship with the City of Suffolk.
Thank you, sir. We have our next speaker, please. Do we have anyone else who would like to speak to this ordinance? Hearing none. This public hearing is now closed. Council, an ordinance has been presented for consideration. Questions, comments, or a motion? Councilman Williams?
May I move for approval?
Got a motion for approval from Councilman Williams. Councilman Ward?
Second.
A second from Councilman Ward. Is there any further discussion of the motion? Hearing none. Council members prepare to vote. Please vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
The motion has been approved by a vote of eight to zero.
Our next public hearing is an ordinance to amend Chapter 31, Unified Development Ordinance of the Code of the City of Suffolk, Article 5, Subdivision, Section 31-506, B, parentheses 2, Minor Subdivision, Appendix A, Definitions, and Appendix B, Submission Requirements, B9, Final Plats or Site Plans. This is OTA 2022-002. Mr. Manager, please provide an overview.
Yes, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. Kevin Wine will provide the overview on this item.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. This is something we've talked about briefly in the past. This is something our Planning Commission chewed on, Committee on Ordinances, and it's a common sense ordinance text amendment for us. But essentially, it only doesn't change, more reinforces, clarifies. But it was designed to resolve an issue as it relates to re-subdivisions of property, modifying the size of the parent tract. Parent tracks are tied to a date of applicability in our subdivision ordinance of March 1, 1970. So new parcels need to be located within the existing boundaries of that parent track. Previous direction that was given under a previous planning director led to approval of some plats, placing cuts on different parent parcels from what existed in 1970. So this is kind of the issue, and this is where we identified some opportunities for clarification. The first being that subdivision cuts are limited to the parent track as it existed on or prior to March 1, 1970. Additionally, we took this opportunity to define what parent track means in Appendix B. The existing language in this code section, we identified could benefit from some additional clarity. This is, this does not impact how we will process minor subdivision reviews. It does not impact how we are going to approve minor subdivisions. But what it does do is it limits the ability for misinterpretation in the future of what our current ordinance reads. So without further ado, I'll get into the changes here. The first, we're defining parent track, and this is how we propose to do that. A lot, parcel, or track of land legally established prior to March 1, 1970, of which a plat or legal description is recorded in the Circuit Court Clerk's office. The second modification we are proposing is adding subsection B, which notes that new lots created in accordance with the subsection A above must be located within the physical boundaries of their associated parent track as it existed on that date of applicability, March 1, 1970. Lastly, and this is a change, but I think it's a pretty common sense change for both staff and the development community. But this is language we've taken from our family transfer regulations and applied them to the requirements for minor subdivisions. But we're adding this section. For minor subdivision plats is outlined by Section 31-506 of this ordinance, the applicant shall submit a title report prepared by a title examiner verifying the ownership and subdivision history of the parcel. This is something that in a lot of cases developers have already done. But for staff, it assists us in identifying how much, how many cuts a property has. When we're able to look back through a title When we're able to look back through a title report prepared by a professional, it will detail that history for us and help improve the efficiency of the process because we're planners, we're not title examiners. So this would be incredibly beneficial. So that kind of concludes my presentation, but I'll close with this. The Planning Commission, at their meeting September 20th, 2022, voted eight to zero to approve a resolution recommending approval of this ordinance text amendment. That concludes my presentation. I'll be happy to answer any questions at the conclusion of the public hearing.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Wine. Before we open the public hearing, Madam Clerk, please explain the timing system.
This is a public hearing, and each speaker is asked to provide their name and their address, and will receive three minutes to offer their comments.
This is a public hearing. Will the first speaker please come forward and provide their name and address?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, City Manager and Council. My name is Jesse Johnson. I practice law here in the city. My office address is 3508 Robbs Drive. And I'm here representing a number of people who can't be here tonight because primarily they're farmers, and they wanted to comment on this particular ordinance change, but for reasons that you know, at this point, when you've got peanuts on the ground, you've got soybeans on the vine, and cotton doing what cotton does, you've got to get it up. So they wanted to be here, they can't be here, and I think they deserve a voice, and I would hope that we could continue this public hearing to allow them to come in and speak, and maybe allow us a situation where we can at least have some discourse on this particular ordinance that we've been told is just fine, but now all of a sudden it needs to be changed after going back a history of eight to 10 years and doing business the way we've done business on behalf of people who subdivide property in the rural areas. That's primarily what's impacted. So the technical part of it, I had hoped to have a surveyor here, but he's got COVID. And I wanted him to explain to you in detail exactly what these changes meant, and exactly what they would mean to a landowner like a farmer who lives and dies by his land. There needs to be some flexibility here, which this ordinance doesn't give. And we would ask simply, and I can go on about the technical things, but we would ask that you give the community a voice. They simply could not be here tonight. They're working hard. They're trying to maintain their livelihoods. So I don't know whether, I don't know whether you would entertain such a motion, but I think it's certainly in order, and I would ask you to consider that. Otherwise, I can go into all sorts of technical things. I can't do that in five minutes, or three minutes, whatever the timing is. And that's another reason why I think this thing needs to be explored, perhaps on a committee level. It just makes sense. You know, words are powerful. It doesn't matter how many, how many words or how many few words. Words are powerful. These words that are being changed have significant ramifications in the rural community. And we feel like this case, this, this public hearing needs to be continued to give the people who are actually affected the ability to come and speak. So if, if, if there is no hint of anybody wanting to make such a motion, I guess I'll drone on a little bit more. So, gentlemen, I don't know. If that's where we are, that's where we are. But it removes a significant part of a farmer's potential income. For those of you who grew up on farms or know what farms are all about, the land is everything. And historically, farmers have used their land for various purposes, not just to grow crops, but to use that land as a savings account. I don't know how many times, growing up in a rural community in Chalkettuck, where farmers would be able to sell their property if they needed to, to buy a new piece of equipment, or if they had a bad year, to pay the bills. And that is traditionally what's happening. Now, the areas that this, that this ordinance change would hit would be what's known as a boundary line adjustment, where you can adjust a boundary line and maybe, maybe create another lot or two on behalf of that landowner. And I would, I would point out to you that I know some of the argument is, well, we're taking land out of agricultural use. That's not necessarily so, and I'm sure that I could cite recent actions by this council.
I'm sorry, sir. That concludes your time.
Okay, thank you.
We have our next speaker, please. Do we have anyone else who would like to speak to this ordinance? Would like to ask the city attorney a question, if I could? If it was anyone's, if it was anyone's desire to continue the public hearing, then that would have to be made in the form of a motion now before I close the public hearing. Is that correct or no?
No. You would need to close this public hearing. City Council has the right to ask for a second public hearing on an item. The code requires at least one public hearing, but you can have more than one public hearing if City Council so desires. But there really is no procedure for taking motions in the middle of a public hearing.
Okay. All right, thank you. I just wanted to clarify before I close it. Okay, hearing no additional speakers. This public hearing is now closed. Counsel, an ordinance been presented for consideration. Questions, comments, or a motion? Councilman Fawcett.
Thank you, Mayor. Want to appreciate Mr. Johnson coming up and speaking tonight, but I'd like to, I got this thing in my gut. It says, I don't know why we would have to do this tonight, that I would offer that we would go ahead and I make a motion to delay this for 60 days and allow the opportunity for those that would like to come and speak on this particular ordinance. And at that time, you know, we can go ahead and make a decision, but for tonight, I make the motion to move this ordinance for 60 days to be heard again, and give the farmers and people that are interested to be here that can't be here an opportunity to come out and speak on it. Thank you.
If I may, if we could amend the ordinance for an actual date, because 60, it doesn't necessarily mean that a City Council meeting will fall within 60 days. So I think we would be looking at the second meeting in December.
That's, that's fine. I can, I can amend that to my request.
I believe that's the 21st of the...
21st of December. Correct?
I'm checking myself here. Yes, 21st of December.
So my motion is to move it 60 days to the 21st of December council meeting.
And do we also have to schedule a public hearing at the same time?
I believe that Mr. Fawcett's motion was to schedule a second public hearing on the 21st.
Okay. I heard you table it, but I didn't hear specifically schedule a public hearing. Just make sure we're touching base. Okay. Councilman Goldberg.
Mayor, with that in mind, I'd like to second that motion.
Okay, we've got a second from Councilman Goldberg. Is there any further discussion of the motion? Councilman Johnson?
I'd like to little, come back up there just a minute. You know that I'm going to make you tell me more than what you told me. Kevin, I guess this is not for me as much as it is for the public, because I do, I've got it in my head what this is about, but be explicit to the public. This is pretty much about road front on property, more or less, to take cuts off. Let the public understand.
Yeah, absolutely. And for the sake of simplicity, I cut some visuals out of my presentation that I think would have been helpful. But the issue is the date of applicability, March 1st, 1970. You have parent tracks. And some parent tracks have road frontage, some don't. That's a part of this, but what, what we've seen is boundary line adjustments of property, which, mind you, would not be impacted by this ordinance. They're regulated by the state. People, provided that the lots meet the minimum lot size, will continue to be able to move their boundary lines. But they've been moving the boundary lines to get road frontage or better circumstances for property outside of environmental issues, and yielding those cuts technically on another parent track. So the parent tracks have been yielding more, more cuts than they're afforded per our current ordinance. So once again, this isn't necessarily a change in procedure for staff. This is just making sure that that language is in the code to deter any future misinterpretation.
And that being said, we developed an ag advisory committee just to give us some help on these issues. Has this been taken to the ag advisory committee?
Yes, this issue has been discussed with them, and by and large, that agricultural advisory committee is quite supportive.
They're for it?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, that makes up my mind. Thank you.
Thank you.
Counsel, any other questions or comments? If not, we have a motion on the floor from Councilman Fawcett to table until December 21st. We have a second public hearing, and a second from Councilman Goldberg. Hearing no other discussion? Council members prepare to vote. Please vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
The motion is approved by a vote of six to two, with Councilmember Labarlo and Councilmember Johnson voting in opposition.
Next item is a resolution adopting the 2023 legislative agenda for the city of Suffolk. Mr. Manager, please provide an overview.
Yes, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of the Council. At your October 5th regular meeting, we received... An overview of the 2032 draft legislative agenda. Since that time, there has been one addition and one amendment to the draft legislation agenda. And with us this evening is Randa Gaetan, our senior administrative analyst, who will provide an overview of the agenda amendments or revisions. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of Council. Mr. Manager, following Access Points presentation on October 5th, staff has amended the 2023 legislative agenda to further align with your priorities. Those two amendments are, first, a language amendment to the public safety item requesting increased support with assisting public safety officials with the management of mental health challenges. We have put in additional language which further aligns with the PDC and our regional partners' requests. That language is in blue. Oh, I guess I could have done a little bit of that. That language is in blue right there, and reads, "Flexibility to engage other qualified professionals to provide transportation and oversight during the handling of mental health patients through local government contracts or any other means should be evaluated to reduce the demands placed upon our local police forces." The second amendment is the addition of an item that pertains to the Western Tidewater Regional Jail. And that item is, during the 2022 General Assembly session, Senate Bill 581 passed. This bill required a work group to convene to assess the fees charged to an inmate and report those findings by December 1st, 2022. The city is in opposition of any amendments to the current fee or commission structure of local and regional jail facilities. Fees and commissions include those related to the cost of an inmate's keep, work release, participation in educational or rehabilitative programs, telephone services, commissaries, and electronic visitation systems. Amendments to these fee structures will place unnecessary burden upon the localities who share the financial responsibility and should be replaced with revenue-neutral sources if any amendments are recommended. Not yet. We have included this item because we have a shared interest, and the city of Suffolk that we all have a shared interest with the localities, but the city of Suffolk has a significant interest. The impact that these amendments or abolishments of these fees stand to impose upon the participating localities. Okay, anyway, outside of these amendments, our priorities remain the same, those being the expansion of mental health assistance and services with the public safety, in the public safety arena, ensuring protections of our financial and regulatory interests, seeking funding and support for necessary transportation projects, protecting the city's interests in various community development initiatives, and continued protections for local land use, such as, such as continued protections and increasing, increases, increasing in funding for African-American cemeteries. And finally, environmental and utilities protections, such as maintaining existing water-related fees and seeking an increase for funding in dam, for funding of dam improvements. And of course, our various organizational endorsements of their legislative priorities for the Virginia Municipal League, the Hampton Roads Planning District Commission, Virginia Association of Police Chiefs, and the State Fire Chiefs Association. And with that, any questions?
Counsel, questions, comments, or motion? Councilman Johnson?
Randa, thank you for your work on this, and I'd like to make a motion that we approve it as presented with those amendments.
Got a motion for approval from Councilman Johnson. Do we, Councilman Ward?
Second.
Have a second from Councilman Ward? Any discussion of the motion? Hearing none, before I ask you to cast your vote. Randa, I want to thank you very much. Before we leave, thank you very much for working diligently to get these changes in the legislative agenda. What we have incorporated are not small items. House Bill 581, depending on what happens, could have as much as a $3 million fiscal impact on our regional jail, which we contribute about, we participated about 70%, so that would cost our city over $2 million, plus actually put inmates in a position where they may not receive those amenities or assistance that they get now because of the fiscal constraint. And also incorporating especially the TDO issues and the ability for us to handle other qualified people, to relieve our law enforcement individuals of that responsibility, you know, ties in to our regional efforts, and hopefully everybody else will be following suit. So with that being said, we got a motion on the floor for approval from somebody. Councilman Johnson, and a second from Councilman Ward. I got it. Hearing no further discussion, please prepare to vote. Please vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
Motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
Okay, at this time, we moved, there was a motion to move the United Way 2022 Community Cares Award presentation from our special presentations and place it under staff reports. Mr. Manager, would please provide an overview?
Yes, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of the City Council. Tonight, we have the United Way of Southampton Roads team here with us to present the city the 2022 Community Cares Award. At this time, I request Jacob Peterson and Phil Demuth to the podium to meet the mayor.
Just want to say thank you. We had a little traffic issue, so we had to delay a little bit. And it worked out with the nick of time, I tell you what. That was great. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of Council. We're here tonight to say thank you from United Way. This is Jacob Peterson. He is the vice president of resource development at United Way of Southampton Roads. And I'm Phil Demuth, not as Demuth trained tonight, but as a United Way volunteer. And it's funny, the last time I was here talking with you all, it was back in September 4th of 2019, and you guys were getting ready for, it was Hurricane Dorian, I think. It was a little bit crazy around here, but it's great to be back. I've been serving with the United Way for about 20 years, and the United Way has worked with the city of Suffolk and to address and customize some specific areas of need. Every healthy city has a good relationship with the United Way, and United Way goes in and fills in those gaps that you may need some assistance with, and, and there's a good relationship there. And so tonight, we're here to celebrate that and here to honor the city of Suffolk for, again, your partnership on your annual campaign. We haven't been here for a few years, so over the past couple of years, it's been challenging times, and despite that, your employees have done a wonderful job of giving back to your community through United Way, and it made it a top priority. I had the honor, I guess it was last summer, to meet with Al and also your team here with Parks and Rec, and I... Parks and Rec, and I got a really good feel of how committed you are for United Way. You do this really neat golf campaign every year, and even in 2020, you were able to make $20,000 with no players because everyone still pitched in and gave to United Way. So that is definitely impressive. So over the past three years, you guys have given over $300,000, the local citizens here and also all your employees. What's funny is I've been at your regional jail as well, and I have met the team there, which also gives to United Way. So it definitely runs deep throughout your community. The money that you gave through COVID was huge. A lot of these organizations were not going to exist without some kind of help, and that money that was provided helps keep these survive, these organizations survive, to help those who really needed it the most. The campaign has helped you guys with grants for your local area as well with United Way. The Children's, the Children's Center, Salvation Army Suffolk, the UP Center, and it's funded some really neat initiatives with the schools. One is a summer academic program that you guys do, and it really helps kids in need that are struggling in school through the summer months. And it's a program, it's like a camp that they can get to continue to study, but they do fun things. They learn how to swim, they do other things, gardening, and just, just really helpful for them to stay and avoid the summertime education slide that occurs. But with all this said, we're here to present you with the 2022 Community Cares Award, and for your efforts and engagement, we are proud to continue to work closely with your amazing team. And we're proud that this plaque made it tonight through two different traffic jams, so it is very special.
At least it's not perishable. Mark, get over here, buddy.
I wonder where they were coming from. Maybe in Poria.
Thank you, appreciate it. Okay, we got a motion to schedule a city council work session for Wednesday, November 2nd, 2022, at 4:00 PM unless canceled, and the motion would be in order. Councilman Fawcett?
Move to approve, Mayor.
Motion for approval from Councilman Fawcett. Councilman Williams?
Second.
Second from Councilman Williams. Is there any discussion of the motion? Hearing none, council members prepare to vote. Please cast your vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
Okay, we'll now move to non-agenda speakers. Madam Clerk, do we have any non-agenda speakers, and if so, please explain the time.
Yes, we do have non-agenda speakers this evening. Each person participating under the item of business entitled "Non-Agenda Speakers" shall limit their remarks to the services, policies, and affairs of city government and shall be permitted five minutes for the purpose of presenting his or her matter. Speakers appearing before city council will not be permitted to participate in the following activities: to campaign for public office, engage in personal attacks, promote private business ventures, or use profanity. Speakers who violate these rules will be declared out of order by the presiding officer and will immediately yield the floor and be seated. Our first speaker is Tim Palmer, 2019 Mead Parkway, representing the Western Tidewater Free Clinic regarding clinic operations.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council, and city staff. My name is Tim Palmer. I'm a board vice chair of the Western Tidewater Free Clinic and a Suffolk resident. On behalf of our patients in the clinic, I'm just here to say thank you for the support that the City of Suffolk has provided to the clinic. The City of Suffolk's been helping fund the clinic since its inception in 2007. That's when the clinic started, and your operating budget funding this year is $214,650, and that will provide year-long comprehensive care to about 150 City of Suffolk residents through about 1,300 visits. And our annual cost of care is about $1,450 per patient, but your support will allow us to continue to provide support for very high-risk patients living in the City of Suffolk. And just by way of comparison, each dollar the city gives, get back about a three-for-one in the services that the clinic provides to the residents of City of Suffolk. For the first six months, we've served about 670 City of Suffolk residents to about 3,500 visits. That's an average of about five visits for each of the patients that we have. And the City of Suffolk represents our patient base. It's about 59, 60% of all the patients that we serve. So much of the clinic, the service is to the City of Suffolk residents. The City of Suffolk residents also have received free medications worth about $800,000 so far this year. That's just due to the first six months, and about $600,000 in comprehensive care. The last year, this past year, we've seen a bit of an uptick in patients. That's from a downside we had during COVID, so we're definitely on the rise in the last year. But the big part of the clinic also is dental services. That's up about 27% in the last year. It's been such a big part of the clinic's services, such a great need in the City of Suffolk. We recently voted to expand our dental services from two chairs to four chairs. We have a pretty large, about a $1 million expansion project to accommodate that, should be completed sometime this summer, probably optimistic, realistically, the fall of '23. And that will allow us to provide a whole lot more care for the City of Suffolk residents, not just medical, but dental care as well. We have about a 2,200 square mile service area, City of Suffolk, Alawite County, Smithville, Southampton, Franklin, a little bit in Suffolk, and, I mean Sussex and Surrey County as well. We're sensitive to the transportation issues many of our patients have, so we're exploring and actually initiated some micro sites. One is the Hayden Village Center in Franklin. Just let you know, we're very sensitive to the cost of transportation, so we're expanding not just tele-visits, but also remote visits. Our plan is hopefully in the near future to have some onsite help and services in Franklin. And as most of you know, many of our patients, they're critically ill, and the clinic provides a health home that many of these people would not otherwise be able to have. These are very poor people, most of them, some of them unemployed or have no insurance. And I'll just give you just a brief story. A fellow named, patient we have named, which is of course not his real name, he had life-threatening health issues. He's a 50-year-old, 56-year-old City of Suffolk resident, had the worst happen to him, lost his job and his insurance. Somebody referred him to the clinic. It's a fellow with high blood pressure, somewhat controlled through his prior doctor, and his insurance referred to the clinic. We were able to not only help him, but even identify another medical issue he had he didn't even know about. And we're just so proud and so happy to be able to serve people like that. Again, these are underserved people in the City of Suffolk. Our medical director, Steve Greer, after he first visited with him, said, "This fellow appears to be diabetic as well." So when he came in, he had been untreated for several months. A few, know people who have untreated, high blood pressure, often extreme swelling in the legs, to the point that it was way out of control. But through the treatment that we gave him, he was able to get back on his feet. I'm just going to read you a brief quote from Wayne. He says, "It's nothing I can express into words honestly. I'm truly thankful for the clinic and really appreciate everything everyone has done for me as I was beginning to be in bad shape with my health. I've been to other doctors before, and I have never gotten any better care than I received at the Western Tidewater Free Clinic." So the support of the city is critical to the care that we provide for the City of Suffolk residents, makes healthcare possible for the underserved. In fact, we've even helping folks now get on Medicaid. One of the things we're trying to do is provide other sources of care for these folks. I just want to thank each and every one of you for the investment that the city has made in the mission of the Western Tidewater Free Clinic, and hope that the city will continue to support the clinic. And any of you are welcome anytime to have a tour of the clinic, be glad to show anybody here what we're doing there, and as well, answer any questions.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Our final speaker this evening is Thomas Woodward, 227 North Main Street, representing South regarding two cities.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, members of council, my name is Tom Woodward. I live at 227 North Main Street in downtown Suffolk. You say, "Well, what do you want to talk about two cities?" We've got two cities. We've got up there, Connecticut, Darien, New Canaan, Greenwich, you know, up there. And then the rest of us are not living in Connecticut, we're down here. The old city of Suffolk, which gradually has a decline in its neighborhoods surrounding downtown Suffolk, and downtown Suffolk itself needs to have a grip put on. And the problem is this, unfortunately, that over time, downtown Suffolk has evolved into something I don't think anybody ever intended it to be. It's where people do not want to go, particularly at night. What can you do? You can close it down at midnight. Nothing good happens after midnight, I assure you. And by closing it down, I mean from down Constance Road intersection with West Washington Street, all the way down East Washington Street to its intersection with Hosea Road, Commerce Street, North Main Street, the first block. At midnight, everything will close. Now, that includes convenience stores. Seemingly, we in downtown Suffolk, I think, well, the woman walked in the convenience store at 12:30, she'd been shot. On West Washington Street, across from a convenience store at 1:30 in the morning, a man is shot. Convenience stores shouldn't be open after midnight and reopen at 5:00 AM in the morning. Second, there are three nightclubs in downtown Suffolk. I foiled the conditional use permits. Some of those things in there, I'm curious as to whether they maintain. And that is that they have certified security people at the front door. I don't know what that means. That means I can go in there with a gun, maybe. But we need to have periodic inspections of those places. And for once, and I hate to say this, let's be like Norfolk. Four nightclubs in downtown Norfolk, gone. I mean, gone. It's up to the city manager to report it to all of you all in writing, there's been a violation. Then I hope it's the will of this council or the next council to say, okay, we're going to revoke your conditional use permit. Unless we do something, it will continue in decline. Now, I realize that the park downtown is supposed to be the panacea for everything wrong. I hope you don't think those of us from downtown Suffolk will go down there at night because we're not going. Essentially, and this applies to all of you, it's expensive. That's an expensive proposition down there. It's like a Hail Mary pass. You might complete it, but along with almost everybody else in Old Suffolk, good luck. It would be incomplete. Now, I hope this council will do something about it and say, "Let's all decide what we can do to make things better in downtown." You can't do everything. I know you can't, I understand that. But unless we do something, the division between Connecticut and us will continue gradually to widen. And I don't think that's anybody's intention. If you ride the neighborhoods of downtown Suffolk, go over various places and just ride around, and remember what used to be there compared with what's there now, it is slowly I hope you will do something to help all of us take downtown Suffolk back and have it as it is supposed to be and what was envisioned, where people could live upstairs above storefronts, decent people could go to restaurants at night, have a meal, and walk back home if necessary. Not anymore. You just can't do it anymore. So I lay it at your feet, hoping in your infinite wisdom, you'll come up with some solution. Norfolk, I think, has been radical. I'm not suggesting that, but I'm suggesting that there be a no-tolerance policy here of deviations, particularly on conditional use permits. Thank you for hearing me.
That concludes the speakers. Mayor?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Are there any additions to tonight's agenda?
No, Mayor Doeman.
Is there any new business items that require the action of city council for consideration? Hearing none, we'll move to announcements and comments, and at this time, I'll ask interim Director of Media and Community Relations Department Jennifer Moore if she has any announcements.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council, City Manager. The City of Suffolk Finance Department is excited to announce that we've received the Triple Crown for Fiscal Year 2020 from the Government Finance Officers Association. This means that we received an award for the budget, the annual comprehensive financial report, and the popular annual financial report. As well, the finance team received an additional award of excellence in financial reporting for the annual comprehensive financial plan for Fiscal Year 2021. On Tuesday, October 18th, the Human Resources Department hosted the Milestone Award Luncheon at the Planners Club to honor and celebrate employees celebrating a milestone year of employment. Ranging from 20 to 47 years, 93 employees were present to celebrate. The biggest milestone was celebrated by Mr. Richard Brown in the Public Works Department, who is celebrating 47 years of service. Suffolk Fire and Rescue invite you to join as they celebrate their graduation of their 42nd class of the Hampton Roads Fire Academy on Thursday, October 27th. The event will recognize 31 of Suffolk's newest firefighters and will be held at the King's Fork High School at 6:00 PM. The Economic Development Department celebrated a new restaurant in downtown Suffolk by way of ribbon-cutting ceremony last week. Located inside of the Suffolk Center for Cultural Arts, Delish is a smokehouse and grill with a Polish twist. The menu features authentic Polish dishes such as pierogies, kebasa, and kraut. They are open for breakfast, lunch, and dinner every day except Tuesday. Suffolk Parks and Rec invite you to the dedication ceremony for the newly-named Curtis R. Miltier Senior Recreation Center on Friday, October 28th at 1:30 PM. Formerly called the Whaleyville Rec Center, the facility will be renamed and dedicated to the lifelong Suffolk City Council member and former mayor, Curtis R. Miltier Senior, for his leadership and commitment to the City of Suffolk. The City of Suffolk wants everyone to have a safe and enjoyable time as they celebrate Halloween on Monday, October 31st. We remind you that trick-or-treating is for those ages 12 and under, and that trick-or-treating in Suffolk ends at 8:00 PM by city code. In the spirit of Halloween, we encourage citizens and their families to participate in these upcoming spooky events. Downtown Suffolk's Trick or Treat Event is on October 30th from 4:00 to 6:00 PM. Bring the family and your dog for candy and Halloween fun. The Office on Youth is hosting a drive-through trunk-or-treat on Monday, October 31st from 5:30 to 7:00 PM at Cypress Park. And Suffolk Tourism is hosting a Friday Night Frights movie featuring The Ring on October 28th at 8:00 PM. Tickets are $3 per person. Now, on to some less frightening events. The Suffolk Arts League reminds you that the 2022 Annual Juried Exhibition is opening this weekend. This display of original artwork includes all forms of media. The exhibition is open October 22nd through December 2nd at the Suffolk Art Gallery. Suffolk Public Library is hosting Vamos a Ballar, Let's Dance, on October 28th from 6:00 to 9:00 PM at the Planners Club. Put on your dancing shoes and get ready for, to dance salsa and the merengue all evening. Dancers will enjoy upbeat music, refreshments, and activities perfect for all ages. Suffolk Parks and Rec is hosting DMV Connect at the East Suffolk Rec Center on Monday, October 31st from 10:00 AM to 3:00 PM. DMV Connect is a service outreach program that serves Virginians who may not be able to travel to a DMV office. DMV Connect provides nearly every DMV service, including driver's license, real IDs, titles and registrations- and registrations, license plates, disabled parking placards, EZ Pass transponders, and more. For more information, visit DMVNow.com. Economic Development celebrates Small Business Saturday with the Restored Pop-Up Shop Event on Saturday, November 26th from 10:00 AM to 4:00 PM. Join over 30 merchants throughout Suffolk's historic downtown district, offering artisan-quality crafts, jewelry, fine art, holiday ornaments, and more. Shoppers are invited to head downtown to enjoy hot chocolate, balloon art, live entertainment, face painting, and a visit from Santa. And for those sporting enthusiasts, the Courthouse Fountain Park will have a seating area with big screen TVs showing the game. Suffolk Parks and Rec is hosting a DIY terrarium workshop on Saturday, November 12th at 10:00 AM at the East Suffolk Rec Center. This relaxing workshop will guide participants through the art of creating timeless terrariums. The registration fee is $20 and will include all materials and light refreshments. Registration is online at SuffolkVA.us. Keep Suffolk Beautiful is excited to host its next recycling event and Tire Amnesty Day for residents on Saturday, November 12th at the Public Works Operations Facility at 800 Carolina Road from 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM. This is a free event and a great opportunity to recycle and dispose of unwanted items. Items accepted include electronics, batteries, and household hazardous waste items such as oils, gas, and propane tanks. This event will also accept tires and large appliances. For more information, visit SuffolkVA.us. And finally, on your screen, there are various ways residents can connect to the City of Suffolk happenings. So thank you for your time and have a great evening.
Thank you very much. We'll now move on to announcements from City Council, and we're going to start with Councilman Williams.
Thank you, Mayor. Going to be brief tonight. First, I would like to offer my condolences to the Chambers family and the Church family of the Pleasant Union Baptist Church for their loss. Reverend Dr. Chambers was a pillar in our community, and he will truly, truly be missed. Also, yesterday, I attended the milestone luncheon for the employees that has 20 or more years of service with the City of Suffolk. I would like to personally thank each and every one of them for their dedication and service to our city. I was glad to hear that the light poles had been ordered from the, starting at the railroad track to Liberty Street on East Washington. Glad to hear that they were finally ordered. That's a great job. Do have a question. It's my understanding that we may not get them until the first of the year, which means that we won't have the decoration or the lighting on the current poles. So my question is, if you could, Mr. City Manager, check into maybe, see whether there's some type of soda lighting that can go on the poles, on the poles, so those poles can be lit up as well as the ones on the other side of Washington. Have a few more. Have some tree limbs and trash and debris next to the fence after the crossing of the railroad track on Colloden Street, across from Knight Street, and extending around Gloucester Street. Now, this is the same property that I mentioned at City Council meeting on May 4th, and I also sent a text message regarding this property on September 27th at 2:52 PM, along with photos. What has happened, I'm thinking the city, I'm not sure, but someone went out and they sprayed the fence line. And once the fence line was sprayed, of course, all the vegetation died. The tree limbs are still protruding through the fence. However, it has exposed all that trash and debris that was covered when the foliage was green. So it's a mess. It's a nightmare when you ride through there. So if we can get staff to take a look at that and look like it's on the city right away, and it looks horrible when you're riding down Colloden Street. Also, there's a vacant lot on the corner of Johnson Avenue and Colloden Street that has some grass and weeds issues. I think the grass is probably about three or four feet tall at this point. There's a vacant lot on the corner of Van Barren Avenue and Colloden Street. Here again, we got grass and weed problems there. I'm sure most of these places that I'm mentioning, should they get cut, it would be the last cut for the season. Also, on the corner of Gloucester Street and Colloden Street, same issue with the grass and weeds. And there's a vacant lot where Mills Street ends and intersects with Spruce Street. There's a field there. The grass and weeds are pretty high there. I know it's at least four to five feet tall there. And that's all I have. So with that, I would like to say goodnight.
Councilman Goldberg.
Thank you, Mayor.
I'll be brief, Mayor. This morning, I attended the Workforce Services Council meeting over in Newport News, and there were some issues that were brought up and some things that I thought maybe we should be aware of. They have identified that 30,000 jobs are going to be needed in the maritime industry in this area over the next five years. That's 30,000 jobs in the maritime industry. And that relates, not just to the shipping side of it, but from standpoint of the water, it talks about the transportation side and all of that. Now, the local employers in the area have agreed this year that they have 11,000 job openings right now that they can't fill. And they explained, they were trying to explain why they can't get the individuals filled because of what's going on. And they did a survey, and they went back to college students that have graduated from this area and are in college now, and they went back to them and to see if, you know, if they would be willing to come back to Hampton Roads. And most of them explained reasons why they would not come back to Hampton Roads, and it dealt with, of course, the availability of a variety of jobs. One of the things they explained was that they might be able to come back and get a job in an industry, but if they didn't happen to like it, is there another industry similar to it that they could transfer over to or apply to for another job? And some of that is not available. So, and they'd rather go to somewhere else where that possibility of transfer would be available. The second thing that I bring up, that they spent a lot of time today talking about, was housing. They say that in Hampton Roads, not just Suffolk, but Hampton Roads, there is a real need for more housing, and the types of housing that these students, these, I guess they call them the Gen Generation or the Z Generation or whatever it might be, what they want in housing. And they say, "We do not have enough of that for them to come back and have choices either to rent or to buy." And so I found that quite interesting, that they did the study from the whole region, and that's some of the information that I wanted y'all to know about. Thank you, Mayor, for your time.
Councilman Ward.
Yes, I wanted to also give my condolences to the Chambers family and Church Pleasant Union. I'm going to take my time tonight because I want to make sure that not only the whole city of Suffolk should know what Dr. VT Chambers have meant to this city. I want to go back, and I wasn't here, but I had learned that he had one time called Pastor Bar Magillian in 1967. Then he also was called a pastor Pleasant Union, at which time he served two churches. And upon that, he retired both his churches. Then he went to Providence Union Church, United Church of Christ, 1976. But one of the things that, if you know Dr. Chambers, he was special, different, but he had God sent on him. And for me to say that, I just don't say it anytime, but it was something that it was different from this man of God. They had a banquet about two weeks ago. He was living there, and he wasn't able to make it. He was in hospital. And they filmed a video for he can look at it. So it was in Chesapeake. I'll say maybe 300 people or more. You had to have a tuxedo and gown, and people from all over the country attended. With that, two weeks later, which he passed, he went home. He went homecoming. And always about Dr. Chambers was, they asked me to speak, and we know up here, that's a hard task at times. I'm not going to speak to many places. But Miss Naomi Chambers got a way of getting things done, and what Pleasant Union meant to me, I had to speak. But what happened was, they didn't have, normally you go to the events, they got two minutes, talk for two minutes. And I happened to go a lot more than two minutes. And then after that, there was, you know, my statements made, and, you know, it's two minutes. So when Dr. Chambers asked me to speak again at the homecoming, it was stated that it was for two minutes. And to me, I just get started in two minutes. Like I said, um, he was a friend. He meant a lot to me, and I respect him well. So I said, "Give me another setting, and I'll speak more than two minutes. I know I can't speak for two minutes. I can't get my point across. I don't think that fast." So I gave an invitation, I'll speak again at another event. But what happened was, the Lord led on me, he said, "You know what? I'm going to council." I said, "A lot of times, other council people," which is all right, "take their time and express what they want, maybe this is where I can sit and say a few things more than I would have said in two minutes." If you know VT Chambers, Dr. VT Chambers, it was something about him different. And what I'm saying to you is that most of us know churches, pastors, and our, especially in minority communities, it's no different than preaching, but there's certain things go on in our certain communities that is a little different. So I went back and started thinking. I said, "There was always something special about him," and I was trying to figure it out. So it came to me. Dr. Chambers came back to Pleasant Union. And when he came back to Pleasant Union, it must have been a call. I was not raised here. I was not born here, but 50 years ago, to go to South Suffolk, which ain't nothing wrong now, how some of the people there wasn't represented to the fullness, some of the things that they didn't receive. And I'm not knocking nobody, I'm just saying, for this man to go back there and stay there 50 years, if you know anything about preaching, you know anything about church pastors, 50 years is something that you have to be called there, you and God talk something, something, 50 years, this community with those who had situations where, you know, things just wasn't happening, and he must have seen it, because Dr. Chambers could have been anywhere. Tonight, I passed out some celebrity of life that came from the funeral for the homecoming, and I've seen some of his accolades. And reason why I said that, I want y'all to see it and read it for yourself on my council, because I'm not a storyteller. But I just wanted to make sure you look over the things that this man brung to Suffolk. And sometimes, people in our own, we don't get the accolades of other people seeing us. That just happened. But this man was an advocate for religion, education, and was committed to meeting the needs of the growing demands for education and training pastors and ministers. As such, under his pastoral leadership, Pleasant Union hosts, they hosted the Virginia Union Lynchburg School for Teaching Site, was a teaching site for 20 years, for teaching some of our pastors in the City of Suffolk. He was very, him and Ms. Naomi Campbell, very much involved in some of the education around that community. We told myself that they even bought a house and had that house for, I think, for tutoring. And for me to sit here and y'all possibly, well, no, I'm going to say this, to know ministers and pastors of churches, certain things are lacking in certain communities. The Chambers seen that, and I'm going to say it again, remember this, you don't stay nowhere 50 years if you don't think you can help or is a need for it. And the Chambers knew there was a need for that community. We're talking about 50 years. Dr. Chambers could have been anywhere he wanted to. And I'm saying to you, some of the places he affiliated with, Virginia Baptist Convention, Metro Ministers Conference, Past Monitor of Past Ministers of Music, of the Sharon Missionary Baptist Association, allied by the Lock Carey Foreign Ministry. Now, what I just read to you, them organizations of ministers and religious organizations, that is, it's not just a group, but it's one of the top line of ministers' organizations in the African-American community. You can't, that's one of the top. Not saying, you know, I'm not, it's not about black and white with the United States. It ain't no about black and white. I want y'all to get that straight. I'm just talking about when others see a person that is different, because I'm the type of person that talk less but observe a whole lot. And I said to myself over and over, I said to myself, "If I had a son that was interested in the ministry, I would have told him, 'Get under Dr. Chambers,' because all what he showed, he was a pastor at all times." Y'all know the story about me going as Katrina, that I didn't know how to get to New Orleans, and I happened to deliver papers, whatever. They laugh at that too, but that's right, God gave me that ability to do that. And I was talking to the Chambers, and I said, "I don't know how to get there." And Pastor Chambers said, "We, Dad don't want to fly," that's what my Chambers called him, "He don't want to fly." I said, "We gonna drive." And so he said, "Well, can we go?" I said, "Sure, because I don't know where I'm going." Dr. Chambers, we went there, and he wasn't behind the pulpit. He was as Pastor Chambers. Well, when you be with a person, by being with a person, oh, you can see what a person really is. And Dr. Chambers was a man of God. Now, I want you to look at what I gave you, so you, Pastor President of the Hosea Lane Civic League, Member of the National Association of Advanced Color People, the NAACP, Minister of Radical Justice of Suffolk Culture Arts Center, recognition and awards included, the City of Suffolk Certified of Recognition, dedicated for 50 years. Dedicated for fifty years, again, it was said fifty years of pastoral service. United States Senator Mark Warner. Commendation from State of Virginia, Deweese Lucas. Sharon Missionary Baptist Association Allied Bodies Trailblazers Award. Pastor, co-pastor of the Moderator of the Year, one hundred and seven years of Sharon Missionary. That's another organization. Things that I'm reading off that my fellow members could see. I just want y'all to look at this. Because we had someone in our community that did the work, that God has put upon him. Yeah. He was Virginia Baptist Convention, Tidewater Metro Ministers Conference, Past Moderator and Past Minister of the Music of Sharon Missionary Baptist Association. Even Seminole Suffolk Inter denomination of Minister Alliance, Inter Denomination Ministers Forum of Portsmouth, Chesapeake, Isle of Wight, Wright Baptist Sunday School Union. It can go on and on. And what I'm afraid of, that all the hard work that this man have done for City of Suffolk. Just because he got the home going, that don't mean he would not be forgotten. Pleasant Union and Ms. Chambers will not let that happen. I'm here tonight, and me and Councilman Williams, we discussed this. I'm here tonight. I want to know, what is the procedure, Mr. City Manager? I think you said it to me before. I know it used to be, I know it's web street. I want to know, can we change that? What is it changing in street name? What's the policy? Because Pleasant Union don't know I was going to say this. And Lord have ways of doing things. I didn't want that two minutes. I think Dr. Chambers to me, to express how I felt about it was more than two minutes. And I wasn't going to let nobody limit my time of speaking. Because I remember times when I come to that church. And like I said, that Ms. Chambers be teaching Sunday School and she'll point upstairs. That mean Dr. Chambers is up there. So I'll go up there. I remember times when I come, and Dr. Chambers was still, was the pastor. And with the pastor, he playing the piano. My type of person. Matter of know what it tooks for that church, Dr. Chambers would show them and do it, whatever had to be done. Now, I know some of y'all know Dr. Chambers up here. I want to see, like I said, what it takes for this great man to be remembered in a way that we can say the people all around the country proud of him. We can say Suffolk proud of him too. I want to know if it's alright for the Pleasant Union Baptist Church, they might want something else. But I would love to see web street turn into V T. Chambers Street. Of all the hard work he done with that community, being there for fifty years. And had all the time. He could have left any time he want. But he knew God had sent him there for that. And those who know South Suffolk, you know how hard Dr. Chambers worked. And one thing about the City of Suffolk, he was a quiet man. He wouldn't entertain anything that he thought wasn't godly. I know that by being quiet, I know that, that don't mean you don't have no power. By not talking, that don't mean you don't think. Like I said, it take me a lot to speak out on certain issues. But I'll speak out for the less of these anytime. And I think they have the right idea or they doing, talking right on things that sometime they've been overlooked. So I don't know how I can start that motion of changing web street to V T. Chambers Street, City Manager. But as long as I'm up with council, if that's something that I think that I can help Pleasant Union, I want to start like yesterday. So with that, thank you for my council members for listening to me and taking this time to make sure that we understood what a jewel we had in the City of Suffolk. Thanking God bless.
Councilperson Vella Barlow.
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks, Councilmember Ward. I just have a couple of notes. First of all, I want to thank the young man that led us in the pledge of allegiance. We really appreciate that. And it's an honor to have you with us tonight. Thanks for hanging in for the whole thing. I want to thank staff for all the information that was provided tonight. It's very helpful. And there's always more to learn and more to do. And it's great that we can all work together towards the things that we need to do. To my farmer friends and neighbors out there and to the folks in the community, harvest is, we're probably midway. There's a lot that's been harvested. There's a lot more to go. And just be careful on the roads. Good luck to everybody. And I, as I say every time, if you're behind us, be patient. We're going to turn off soon. The luncheon yesterday was very nice. Appreciate the milestone luncheon. And, and thanks to all the folks that put their time in with the City of Suffolk and for their dedication. And last, was at the Greater Oakland Chuck Tuck Civic League this week and with Crittan and Eclipse Hobson Civic League last week. And appreciate, the sheriff's department was actually at the Chuck Tuck meeting on Monday. But appreciate the folks in those communities and their, their time and energy to interact with the city and to keep the issues in their communities in front of us at all times. And just appreciate their time. And with that, I'll say goodnight.
Councilman Johnson.
Kids don't usually last this long to the end. So to the parents, thank you, guys. I hope you learned something from council tonight. And this is probably good for a second badge. So just hang on to it. Alright? Second thing on my list is to congratulate Tealyn once again. We just expected from Tealyn's office now that finance is always going to be perfect. So congratulations to her. Congratulations to Kevin. And now we're going to see this every year for you because we're going to hear all of your new, and we look forward to that. Because you catch grief sometimes. So we're going to look forward to an excellent future. Police chief, it's making a real difference on fifty-eight. You might not be writing that many tickets, but every time we look up and we see one of your big police cars, I don't want the little ones. I want the big ones. With the light spinning, it slows people down. So for that, I thank you. Now, we only figure out how to keep the tractor trailers on the right lane and keep them out of both lanes. But thank you for being there. And I know, I don't say this, but we need you there all the time. So I know you've got lots of things to look after in this city, but until we get fifty-eight back really running again, thank you. I, I am, the people out there appreciate it as well. I opted to go to the Public Works Academy last week, and I just have to comment on it. I've learned a boatload already. I can't believe how much this goes on in our public works. I wrote down all these notes. I was going to tell you all these things they do, cleaning ditches and this, that, and the other, but I'll bring it next time. The program is well presented. If any of you can come any night, it's Thursday night, six to eight, and six to nine, what time? We were there for quite a while. But the presentations were excellent. We have wonderful people working for this city. You get to be friends with them in one night. I'm just, I was overtaken with how wonderful it was. I intend to keep going. Some of Mr. Policeman things tomorrow night, but I'll get them next time. But it was a great event. I give hats off to Robert Lewis and his staff because they did a super job. That's it. I'm gonna, and I'm just going to say, we didn't really have a frost last night. But tonight, prepare yourselves, we might be getting a frost, particularly in Western Suffolk. So the holidays coming forward. We're getting ready to move into fall big time. With that, I'll say goodnight.
Councilman Fawcett.
Thank you, Mayor. First off, I want to thank, the luncheon was great. I want to thank H R., City Manager, and any other staff that was involved in that. It was, it was quite different. It was very good. It was very well attended and the meal was great. And the desserts were even overhead. So we were great on that. So, I appreciate it. I appreciate that. And I know the employees, the ones that were there, that I want to congratulate, the twenty years through forty-seven years, that they were there, the person that got to forty-seven, Public Works. Man, that's a long time. You know, that's a long, long time. But anyway, I appreciate each and every one of those employees that got the awards because they, that shows that their loyalty to where they work at in their city. And that's, that's great. I want to thank the United Way for coming tonight. United Way's been around a long time. And I'm so glad that this, our city employees participate in that. It really goes a long way. It gives us a lot of mileage and helps a lot of communities and people. So, I thank them for coming. The finance department, again, they hit the home run. Tealyn and your group did a great job to get that award. That's pretty impressive. So I want to thank those that did that. I want to thank Mr. Tim Palmer for coming out tonight and speaking on behalf of the Western Tidewater Free Clinic. He expanded on a few things more they're doing. And you look like you want to do some outreach outside the clinic. You might, I don't know if you have a mobile unit, but that might be something to really explore. A nice mobile unit to go to these places to do those satellites would be awesome. So, maybe you need to ask for more help to see if we can help with that. But I believe in what you're doing at the clinic. We would, people would just not make it if that clinic wasn't here. They just would, they wouldn't get the help or it'd be too late. So, I thank everybody over at that clinic steps up to help those individuals that come in there that are in dire need of some kind of medical. I want everybody to have a safe Halloween out there. Don't, don't get foolish. Do the right thing. And parents, keep track to your children, to what's going on and where they're at. And escort them around where you're going to trick or treat. And do it in a nice respectful way. Take advantage of some of these trick or treat trunk things. They are probably better than knocking on a door. And I think they'd be pretty interesting. I want to thank the fire department again for what they've done and are doing to credit their department within the city. That is a monumental task and it's a great reward. And it's great, the pride of what they're doing is phenomenal. And we got one of the best fire departments in the region, hands down. Their men and women in that department are impressive. And they answer the call every day. And when you hear either a police car or a fire truck going somewhere, someone's having a bad day. But they're trying to go there to make it, make it better. So I want to thank my public safety chief and the fire department as well, police department, to keep up and give our citizens the best service that you can provide. I want to thank the little fellow that came in from Troop One, that gave the pledge tonight. It's very impressive to have somebody come up and give the pledge of allegiance. And you keep working hard and keep getting those merit badges. That's what you're going to do. And then I want you to come back again, if you'd like, and do it again one day. So you can do that. Let's see. I want to thank Councilman Ward for giving that information on Dr. Chambers. I, I know your heart and you knew a lot about him. So I want to give condolences to the Chambers family. But I very impressed on his, where he's been and what he's done for the community, not just here, but around different parts of the state. So it shows in the accolades that he has received. But God will take care of him and his mission. I think I'm close to the end here. I had one more thing, but that's okay. But anyways, I want to thank everybody for a good meeting tonight and I look forward to seeing you in the next meeting. Thank you, Mayor.
Vice Mayor Bennett.
Thank you, sir. I'll start out by saying congratulations to all the employees that had the long service award yesterday. I wasn't able to be there, but my heart was with them as I know that years of service and appreciation that we have for them, for their service to the citizens of Suffolk. So, I just want to say congratulations to meeting that milestone. And I sort of know what it's like when you stay at a job twenty-five and thirty years and get a little recognition. Makes you feel pretty good that they do appreciate yourself. We do appreciate all those employees. Also, I attended the Hosea Lane Civic League last week. And they had some concerns about speeding on Hosea Road. And they asked that we would look at getting the speed reduced from fifty-five down to forty-five from White Marsh Road up to the old landfill there on Hosea Road. And they have a lot of speeders there during the morning and especially in the morning, going to work and after, after work. And that is a heavily populated residential area and on both sides. And I think we should look at trying to get that speed reduced there on White Marsh Road, I mean on Hosea Road. Also, they said it had some flooding concerns between Metal Country Road down going east to, it's a big ditch down below Metal Country. And I don't know whether someone filled the ditch in with a pipe, without a pipe in it or what. But Reverend Green, one of the residents there, said it causes some flooding. So I'd like to have someone to take a look at the ditches there from Metal Country Road down Hosea Road. Also, Suffolk Metals, we have talked about that. We are getting a report back on that, on the truck traffic and the concerns that people from Suffolk Metals have. And I'm hoping that we can come up with some good support and help with that. I think it's a lot of effort has been put into that and the citizens are really concerned with the truck traffic going through their community. And I still haven't been able to figure out why they go down Hosea Road rather than to go down National Parkway out to six six four. So I still black for us to continue to investigate that. Also, from driver, from driver to Chesapeake Line, I'm asking that we look at the striping of the road in that area. There had been some complaints that especially at night, can't have see the line marking. So I'd like for them to take a look at the striping of the lines on National Parkway from driver to Chesapeake Line. Also, I attended this Saturday night, Suffolk Christian Fellowship. They had their twentieth year anniversary. And I would like to recognize Reverend and First Lady, Mrs. Slaughter. And they got started helping people because they had a sort of need in Suffolk. And they had really been supportive of people that was in need here in Suffolk. They're part of the food bank. And now they are trying to expand to North Carolina and also trying to set up a little place to help people over in Franklin. And they started out using their own cash money. Now they're a nonprofit. And they are trying to do more to assist the people that's in need. And that's because they have a heart for the people and they want to do everything they can for people that's in need. So, if you have some help that you would like to give to Suffolk Christian Fellowship Center, that's right there on East Wyssel Street. I don't have the number, but it's right there, close to the police headquarters, right across the street, on East Wyssel Street. So if you'd like to make some donations or help them out, they would be greatly appreciated. They didn't tell me to say that, but I'm saying it on their behalf. Also, I would like to say condolences to Dr. VT Chambers' family, and all, and I have known them over the 50 years that, that he passed at the East Pleasant Union Baptist Church. I do know him, and I was there when he came there, so I do know him when he became pastor of Pleasant Union Baptist Church. So my condolences go out to the family. I did attend the funeral, and saw the family as well there. Also, I was listening at Mr. Woo Wood, when he came forward and was talking about some problems with late hours, and I totally agree with him. On East Washington Street, those stores down there, they just congregate, that's where we've had some shooting, just like he said. And I think we should really look at, I think I've said something sometime back to the manager about this, about time constraints with these places staying open all night long, and that causing a lot, I think it's causing some problem in the area. I do think we need to look at that and see what we can do about the hours that some of these places are operating, and I totally agree that I think that would help with some of the stuff that's going on. I would also like to congratulate Chief Barclay and the Fire Department on the, going forward, doing accreditation, and I cannot thank them enough for all that they are doing. I see they have a big recruitment going on and getting ready to have a graduation and a big class there for that, and I'm happy to see that Suffolk is growing with employment, trying to get people on board, so I think that's great that people want to come to Suffolk and work. So, with that, let's see, I didn't check all my notes off, I should have been checking as it's going. My final comment will be Councilman Militar dedication on the 28th. The family has been notified, and they have the invitations to send out to their relatives and whatnot. They are excited about it, we're looking forward to the dedication of Curtisville Military Rec Center in Whittleville on the 28th at 1:30. And with that, I would say goodnight, and everybody have a great evening. Thank you.
Okay, I'll go ahead and wrap it up here, I'll try to be brief. I too want to extend my condolences to the Chambers family, I was not aware of Reverend Dr. Chambers passing till several days ago. I missed it. I had the good fortune to work with Reverend Naomi Chambers about 40 years ago, so we go way back, and I think Councilman Ward tried to sum it up as best as you could sum up his, his career and his life, but truly an outstanding individual and outstanding family. Also, speaking of outstanding families, I want to offer my sincerest condolences to the Scott family, who are lifelong residents of Suffolk, coworkers of mine. The family member was Al Scott, who passed away, which is one of the younger brothers of the Scott family, I believe there were nine siblings all together, and his older brother Angelo Scott, as most of you know, is, is not only a coworker, but I consider to be, you know, one of my best friends, truly a friend. And my deepest condolences go out to them, another outstanding family. As far as what's happened the last couple of weeks, I don't, I can't believe nobody mentioned the shrimp feast or the peanut fest, you gotta be kidding. I said, you know, it's like hitting a lottery, if I had taken, if I was gonna, you know, take a bet or somebody would mention the shrimp feast and peanut feast fest. The shrimp feast was off the chain, I don't know how many tickets the Suffolk Rurding Club sold, but I would say probably close to 2,500. Great day, great weather, I mean, thank the man above for the weather. No incidents, I haven't seen the final figures, but if I had to guess, Rurding Club probably raised somewhere around $25,000 to $30,000. All that money goes back into the community, every single penny, every single year goes back into the community. We appreciate everybody's support there. The peanut fest, I went out Saturday, you know, we closed up at 6:00, I told my wife, come on and swing by about 6:15, and we'll head out to peanut fest. Well, I hit the bypass, got off the bypass, the traffic was already backed up past the bypass to get into peanut fest, I don't know how far that is, that was probably four miles, five miles, anyhow, took a long time. So peanut fest traffic was in the left, and then through traffic was in the right, so I cheated a little bit, I figured I'd go on the right, went all the way down, made a U-turn. So, saved a few minutes there, but I really want, I want to commend our police department, I mean, I really do, the, the police department, their presence, their attitude while they were there, I mean, this was a big event, we had a lot of people in there. If it wasn't the biggest, it, it, it had to be up there. I think it was a combination of things, like the perfect storm, the weather, the fact that people still kind of been cooped up and getting out for COVID, the 9/11 tribute, that was at peanut fest, I know I turned on the TV every morning before, you know, for a week, and it was being pushed on, so I heard that vendors actually ran out of food the end of Saturday night, and the whole time I was there, all those people, I never felt unsafe, which is kind of unusual, you know, we got to count our blessings sometimes, you get 50,000 people down there probably at one time, you know, I never thought like I had to look over my shoulder or anything else, and I just want, Chief, you just pass that along to your personnel, I mean, they were, they were spot on, you know, and you can be, and you know, and you can have a police presence, but it's a different kind of police presence. This was a, a police presence, everybody's having a good time, heck, we're even having a good time, but we're here to make sure that you say, you stay safe. So, I want to thank all the volunteers that put all the time and effort into it. You know, the folks that, the chairman of the peanut fest and that staff, they probably starting to work on next year's already, and also with the manager's help and, and his staff, and it's just a lot that goes into it, but it's, it's a great event for our city. I did a couple ribbon cuttings, which they had Delish, and also Digital Realtor Team over in Northern Suffolk, I don't get that way as much as I should, but I did get out there for that. The milestone service awards, I think we had 90, was it 93? 93 individuals with over 20 years worth of service, and whatnot, you, over 25, and that's in five-year increments, so we had some other ones, and then we had one with 47. 2,000, I'm getting the numbers now, 2,200 and some years of service total. As I said, at that event, I mean, those folks are, they are the backbone of your organization. They're the ones that, you know, train those individuals coming in, they set the goals, they do the mentoring, they do the supervising, they do the managing, and, and they make it all happen, so thank you to all our city employees there. Let me see, our young man that did the Pledge of Allegiance tonight. Now, there were supposed to be two, are you Carston or Matthew? Carston? Alright, well, good job. So this, you know, having, having a little bit experience in scouts myself, I guess you're working on citizenship in the community, maybe? Is that it? Merit badge, yeah? Okay, well, if you need anything signed off, you just let us know, we'll get you hooked up. Alright, well, with that, I'm gonna go ahead and do our quote of the night, we got an election coming up, so my next two quotes are gonna be related to elections, and this one's from Abraham Lincoln, which I assure nobody in this room or watching needs an introduction, but it's a pretty cool quote. This is from Abraham Lincoln, and I quote, "Elections belong to the people, it's their decision. If they decide to turn their back on the fire and burn their behinds, then they will just have to sit on their blisters." Did we do that one again? Alright, with that, I'll say good evening, and I'll ask for a motion to adjourn. We got Councilman Fawcett.
Move to approve.
You got a motion for adjournment, Councilman Fawcett, Councilman Goldberg.
Second.
Second, Councilman Goldberg, any discussion in the motion? Hearing none, council members prepare to vote. Please cast your vote. Madam Clerk, please record to vote.
Motion's approved by a vote of eight to zero.
This meeting stands adjourned.